I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Councilwoman Bozak here. Councilwoman Grace. Councilwoman McGraw or Councilman McGraw.
Hey.
Sorry. Councilwoman McCarth here. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Biancarti here. Is that everybody? Approval minutes for September tenth, twenty twenty five. So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to comment about, there's a couple places where it says there's discussion, but then there's really not a summary of it. And then there's places where it says there's discussion and there's a good summary. I'd just like Nick to make sure he includes something. So as a reference, if we're looking online, we can find what we're looking for.
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that note. And I know that there was some issues with the YouTube video last time, but I think, are you recording on OBS tonight? Okay, there's a way to record directly to the computer and it'll save a file. So that way if the YouTube has glitches or something, we have a good recording. So, and I think
It was really bad last night.
Yeah, yeah, which is probably the reflection of the minutes, which is, which is fine, but I just wanted, yeah.
Yeah. Ready for your discussion? Roll call please. Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biancarti?
Yes.
All right, reports. We'll go, we'll skip Kirk Treasure because he is currently not here. Counsel. Do you have anything? How good right now? Thank you.
I just want to personally thank the town for sending flowers to my family for plus my brother. I appreciate it. I received them today, so thank you very much.
All right, Clay?
Oh, yeah, I have, oh, sorry. We don't have a couple things.
I, well, no, we sat here for a second. It got kind of awkward.
I did receive some communication back from the cell tower about the agreement. They did finally provide a map of where they'd like to put it. And I, I want to look at that with Brandon in terms of the property because I think it's the piece that would be in the grass between the building department and the, the tower currently. And I think that used to be a septic field, so making sure that it's buildable before we talk about that again. Nick provided the bond spreadsheet and I, I just have some questions about the Corlins Phase Two because there's a bond, but it's expired, so, and, but he's not here. And then I was just curious if, if any liens were filed this month because the process last month was once a month.
So I, I think this was in our mailbox. Did you see this one? September liens?
Wait, September what?
Liens.
Oh.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Would that fall digital?
He didn't put it in the shared folder.
Nope. Exactly.
Please note that for the record.
Do you need this person to listen to the report?
Okay, cool. Joe, did you see this? Is everyone on there that you re-had?
I don't, I haven't saw that, but I did send some stuff lien wise to Nick, yes.
Okay. Okay, cool. And then I didn't see it on the agenda, but just to make sure, it's noted Monday, October thirteenth is the public hearing for our budget. And then the adoption would be scheduled for October twenty seventh.
And those are at seven PM?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Just make sure those get noticed and let one on the thirteen notice.
Yes, correct. I, I was gonna check before I leave, but I think they took care of that.
And I have to be noticed by the same time, whatever it is tomorrow.
Forty, yeah, forty eight hours, yeah.
Considering Sunday don't count.
Right. And then I was hoping Nick would have an update on the Cleveland Cliffs appeal. You haven't heard anything?
I haven't heard a thing.
Have you heard from Nick? Has he?
I did not, no.
Okay.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Well, if Nick arrives, we will circle back around. Clay? And Neil was gonna attend via Zoom?
I did just see an email come through from Neil.
Don't know if you've seen this.
He attached a flyer.
I know they have their event.
Yeah, he sent an email that had the twenty twenty five Ethics Summit flyer Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Eight to eight thirty AM, registration and breakfast. Eight thirty to eleven thirty program at Alon Manor in Marigold. The event is open to the public. You'll pre-registered. I'm like, oh, okay.
Hello, Neil, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Hello?
He's not muted. Oh, I need my Alon mute.
There he is. So he has a Star Trek app on?
It's a pretty fancy house.
We like your background.
Yeah. If you can hear us.
I don't know if you can hear us, but you think.
You can't unmute him, can you?
You can ask to unmute, I think.
Okay, goes. Okay. Hello, Neil?
Yes, actually, there you are. Is there me now?
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you want to do your report?
Oh, sure, okay. I've only got three items. The first one is, and this was in the email that I sent you all. See, after this whole sting there, twenty twenty five Ethics Summit on Thursday, October thirtieth in the morning. Registration starts at eight. It's going to be a combination of a panel of three Northwest Indiana mayors discussing ethics in local government and also some casework again, probably some of the same ones that we've seen before. But this one is going to be special because it's the twentieth anniversary of the founding of the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. And so there's going to be, members of PINS and a few other things handed out. And breakfast will be included as well and there's no fee for the attendee. And it's also open to the public, so if you wanted to invite any of your colleagues, they're certainly welcome. The second one is that the training committee is putting together a training session for the trainers. But not, this time it's not focused on how to deliver the ethics trainings. It's skills-based training for trainers. So not what they're training, but how to train. And then the third one is the progress. Remember, our objective is to get a hundred percent of the employees trained by the end of this year. And where we are right now is we have eleven employees having been trained in two sessions. So I think we're well on our way. And maybe Michelle or Jeremy can talk about what their future plans are scheduled for for the rest of the year. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Neil. I'm gonna go back on mute. Talking to you from the bridge of the Starship Enterprise.
I thought that was your living room.
No, that would be nice.
All right. Town engineer, I got a message from Jeanette, an email. There is no report for none. Building management?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was just confused for a second. Can I skip somebody?
No.
Okay. Brandon is absent.
I have some stuff for him though. So his street report is that street sweeping will begin on the week of October twenty seventh through November third. A road schedule will be announced a week prior to start. No street parking during the road on the scheduled day. Leaf season will begin October twenty first through December tenth. There'll be possible one last week pickup pending the number of leaves that may be still in the trees. Brush pickup will end Monday, November tenth. The flashing stop signs at Hagland are now backed up and running.
They are. They look great.
Good. The fire department provided CPR and first aid training to the street department on nine twenty nine, so.
Joe, were you able to be a part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, good. He said that they're available to show auction items Monday through Friday from seven to three. And that again is the two thousand nine Ford F two fifty and the patent generator. For street, I also have, they, it is sometimes difficult to create a PO for salt for the winter. And because they don't know exactly how much to put and all of that pay down and whatnot. And I guess it, there may be a shortage this year, so they're wanting to get some salt. So I asked them to provide a not to exceed number for us to, well, I guess I'll make a motion. So a motion for MVH zero six two three seven, other materials not to exceed thirty one thousand five hundred dollars for treated salt. And MVH zero six three two one freight not to exceed four thousand two hundred. And this would be three hundred tons of treated salt at a hundred five dollars a ton with the delivery fee. And this would be for the season, total not to exceed thirty five thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then this, this, they believe will cover them to be able to purchase what they need through the season and that.
Okay. A roll call please. Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biancarti?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then his sanitation, lift station cleaning will begin the week of October twentieth and go all week. Eagle Services will be involved with that cleanup. We are still waiting on a dialer for lift station number two. We had one that was delivered and installed, but was used and faulty. And then there was another dialer that failed and froze. And so they're looking for other vendors who have that. But if you followed what's happening in sanitation, they're looking to update all of those with newer technology, for lack of a better explanation. And so, but we need something. And that is our main lift station that pushes everything to the mill. So we really have to try to find that and keep up on that. So he said updates, it is urgent. They know this. And they're doing the best they can. Updates to follow. So he mentions that they can't print some things from the sanitation computer in the laborer's office and may need some sort of assistance before the next sanitary meeting. Or maybe you guys can discuss that at the meeting and I'm not sure.
If he needs a new one or?
Well, no, I think if they can't figure out like how they download it or something, so, but maybe you guys talk about that at the meeting and figure that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tony. Please chief, Jeremy?
Yeah, my report obviously was a little late with everything going on, but Officer Nathan Bennett, he's continuing his field training. He's just now transitioning back onto another crew. I got the information from the Northern Indiana Law Enforcement Academy as far as the registration for the academy that he'll need to attend. The registration opens November third. His academy class would begin in January and the anticipated graduation would be May of twenty twenty six. And he'll be attending at the Northern Indiana Law Enforcement Academy at their new campus in Val Berizzo. That'll be the first class there. The flock LPR system, our department, we regained access to it. Our devices that we're actually adding to the system, it apparently is a eight to twelve month process with permitting through NDOT. We currently have access, but we won't, we won't begin getting billed for our two cameras until they're actually installed and functional. So that two-year window won't start until the cameras are up and functional. But we do have access to all the existing cameras that are in our community, as well as any other agency that shares those with us. We've actually already, they've already helped us with a latency crash identifying the suspect. So in a short time, we're still able to use that and it's back up and running. Additionally, a letter that I received from Detective Patesta from the Indiana State Police. He addressed it to me and he says, "I just wanted to pass along appreciation to you and your agency with special thanks to Assistant Chief Lucas for the assistance that was provided during my investigation into Burns Harbor resident Timothy Olson. I began a child exploitation investigation last October after receiving information from the Illinois Attorney General's Office and the Lake County, Illinois State's Attorney's Office related to the online activities of a KIC messenger account. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children also provided information related to the case. After multiple subpoenas and search warrants were issued, I was led to Mr. Olson, who was determined to be living in the Traditions Apartments in our town. As the investigation progressed, I learned that Mr. Olson was suspected of possessing and distributing files containing child sexual abuse materials. Assistant Chief Lucas was instrumental in gathering intelligence, conducting surveillance and coordinating with Traditions staff as the Indiana Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force executed a search warrant of Mr. Olson's apartment in February. Multiple electronic devices were seized from Mr. Olson, were seized and Mr. Olson briefly spoke with investigators, falling short of confessing to any crimes. Forensic analysis conducted by the Indiana State Police Digital Forensic Unit revealed several files containing CSAM, which is child sexual abuse material. Charges were subsequently filed by the Porta County Prosecutor's Office and arrest warrant was issued last week. Mr. Olson was quickly located and taken into custody by the Porta County Sheriff's Department. He faces multiple felony charges. And it says, "This is another case that highlights the cooperation and teamwork of multiple law enforcement agencies. Thanks again, BHPD." Both Sam and Tony Patastri that works out of this office, they, they work well together. They've made significant progress in a few cases like this, specifically in our community as well. The value that he adds to this town, not working for us, but working alongside us is instrumental. So I'd like to thank him as well.
Thank you. Please tell me. Is that it for your report?
Yeah.
And Fire Chief Ryan is not here. Park Board, Tyler?
Hello. Just a reminder that on the eighteenth, from five to eight thirty, the Park of the Park Foundation will be hosting the trunk or treat and the Fall Fest. The Fall Fest starts at five to eight, trunk or treat from five thirty to seven. If anybody would like to volunteer, please contact him at the park. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, RDC?
Oh, it was a pretty fast RDC meeting today. We got an update that RB Sutton will be on the ground working on those drainage issues. Other than that, works just moving on. Perfect.
All right, correspondence? Did he leave? Not sure if that, just left that to do with it.
Trying not to take out your computer.
There's three correspondents on the agenda. Ida Dyna Tech Manufacturing Incorporated? Ida Tanco Terminals Incorporated? And Kinkles MTDES Permit. Any discussion? All right. Resolutions? Do you have resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen, the police fund appropriations transfer?
Resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen, Town of Burns Harbor Appropriations Transfer. Be hereby resolved, the town of Burns Harbor, Port County, Indiana, that the following transfers of funds be made from the twenty twenty five budget. General Marshall, ten thousand dollars from Deputy Marshall two dash one one two into part-time deputy two dash one one four. Three thousand six hundred dollars from Deputy Marshall two dash one one two into other equipment two dash four four four. Three hundred and fifty dollars from longevity two dash one two two into social security two dash one two one. Seven thousand seven hundred dollars from PERF two dash one two seven into health insurance two dash one two three. Three hundred dollars from cell phone allowance two dash one two eight into health insurance two dash one two three. Seven hundred and fifty dollars from uniform allowance two dash one two nine into health insurance two dash one two three. One thousand seven hundred seven dollars and thirty four cents from travel expenses two dash one three one into uniforms two dash two four four. Passed and adopted this eighth day of October twenty twenty five. Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please. Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes. Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Good thing.
Councilwoman Biancarti?
Yes.
I, from the last month, I was expecting the unsafe building ordinance, but I don't, I don't, I didn't, I guess.
I think that, I think Nick mentioned that that has to be published at least twice. Didn't he say something like that at the last meeting?
I looked at the minutes and the agenda and I thought he said it'd be ready for this month.
I thought so as well, but I don't see anything in this folder. I'll have to double check.
All right. Oh, did we do roll call?
We did it.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
New business. Staff anniversaries?
We do have three part-timers with the police department and I just recognize them anyway. So Austin Haynes has been here for six years. We have Kevin Ruspirskey with one year and Amanda Gussiara for three years. So thank you.
Thank you.
And sanitation requisition, Phil?
Yeah, so we have Gina. She's been a week and a half with us and I hear she's doing well. I was in the office yesterday and had a chance to check in with her. Now that we have our third person, the office had let me know that the board encumbered money from last year to purchase the third desk. So I, if you guys are okay with that, because it does encumber and there's our EPO, I'd like to be able to have them go ahead and order that third desk. And get that into the office. Then Jill can unpack her box.
I walked in and I saw the box over there and I was really sad.
Although, I don't know if this is on there necessarily, but all of the surplus equipment and that desk, I, I think an email was sent to everyone if you're interested. I think it's been given if someone wants it. So I'd like to ask Brandon's department to dispose of it. The desk, the equipment, I'm sure there's the electronic strap off that they can do. And then, because then the new desk will go in that corner, so I will communicate with him to see if they can take care of that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And the sound system in the back office room.
Okay.
So, okay. ADA rumble replacement invoice?
I see the invoice here over.
I didn't, did I don't think I got sent.
Yes, it did. I, I also got it, so. I'll read the email that Kim sent. She said, "The ADA orange rumble triangle near the shelters has been damaged and needs repair." She contacted the original contractor, contractor. They quoted two thousand dollar for removal and replacement. If ADA funds are available, could you please consider approving this replacement? That was sent on September sixteenth and I, and
I do see that. And then I have a copy of the
Yeah, by Royco Concrete for two thousand dollars.
So what are the invoices?
It's a proposal.
Right, how much are they for?
Two thousand dollars.
Just one, one expense of two thousand to fix it?
Yes.
I believe the email indicated she went with the original contractor.
Yes, she said she contacted the original contractor.
Is there any concrete work involved in that or?
I don't know the details.
It says two sections of blacktop sidewalk tear out hallway, approximate five inches of wall, new ADA ramp installed with concrete section of sidewalk board, back around a ramp, all work done with, then it just, we don't talk about what type of concrete that they're going to use. Royco is not responsible for landscaping or lawn.
We do have a line item for town building repairs for ADA, which we have used throughout the town on my time in the council. And there is four thousand dollars available. So I would make a motion to approve the invoice to, who's that for?
Royco Concrete?
For two thousand dollars to repair the ramp at the park. To come, I'm sorry, let me just say that again, to come from the three six one fund of the town.
What is the contractor's name again? I'm sorry.
Royco Concrete, R O Y K O.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Actually, wait for discussion.
Okay. You said, discussion?
Just make sure that they are permitted in the town. I'll make sure Joe gets.
This is the original, so yes, he is bonded and licensed, I believe it says on there.
Oh, he has the license number on that proposal?
I'm not sure. Well, it might be in your email from September eighteenth.
Did you want to see the, what?
Take care of this right here.
Did you wanna see the, what's, here, this right here? Did you wanna say this? Actually, I don't know, so it's second mark on.
Alright, taking a second. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Bozak? Yes. Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biancari?
Yes. Thank you.
I think she's gonna, she's gonna get sent her, show the email.
Does that dislike the contractor?
I just want to mark that as fee for this guy.
He's done work in town before, I'm sure they do.
Tony, what was the, um, fund line, three six one?
Three six one, it's in the town general. That's the last numbers.
I was just gonna put that up here for now. Alright.
Um, Graffport opening, the assembly application permit.
Can you see that in here as well?
So, looking to approve.
Um, I do have, I see the application here in this folder, there's a note on it that said Graff paid a hundred dollar fee. But I believe that the, we have to approve for the gathering?
Correct. And it's at two locations, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so there's two purpose, it says location, shared parking lot between Chevrolet IKEA building, and the other one is shared parking lot between Ford and Toyota building.
And did that, did their gathering require any sort of like police to be there or anything like that?
I, I have had conversations with Don Hadley about it. Um, the, the issue that we brought up, um, was potentially both were trunk or treat events. Um, and the timeframe when they're doing it, that I told him that we would need an officer at each location, we need to prevent kids in trick-or-treat passmen crossing US Highway twenty during rush hour.
Yeah.
Um, so he's, he's aware of that, we'll need a few officers.
And then, do, do they pay you for that too?
Yeah, they, they would pay the officers directly.
Okay, I just wasn't sure about that. Okay. What date was that again?
Uh, when does the date of the event?
Oh, about ten twenty-nine.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve their assembly permits.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post, have sentience?
Uh, let's see. Do you need a second to catch up, Nick?
I do not.
Okay.
I know exactly where we are.
Okay. Sounds cool invoice? I'm gonna pack it, I saw it.
So, you're out of order?
No.
I do apologize.
What do you mean we're out of order?
I had, I had my own, uh, I had my own order written down of how I was gonna approach those.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Cool, number, so we're on number five.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Like, I'm, I think I'm following along.
Yeah, I think we're all, everything is numbered and ready to go. Apologies, guys, apologies, I was late. Alright, uh, Sounds Cool invoice is on here just because I need to know where to pay it from.
And what was this for?
This is a service call for the, for this TV.
What was this TV?
For this one?
Yeah, this TV's not working. The cable that was run by, or Brandon, uh, was run in reverse behind the wall. He tested it, so it cannot be used. So, I mean, he, that's what he, he had come out, because we originally thought that the TV wasn't working for something that he did, but we ran the, uh, Brandon ran the cables, so three cables.
So, it was our error?
It's our error, so we have to pay for it.
Let's see that again.
And Sounds Cool installed the TV?
No, Brandon installed the TVs and the cable. And the cable is run, the, the.
I guess, why did we call Sounds Cool out?
Some, because we did not know.
Well, we have a, we pay a monthly fee for technology to brainstorm. Like, we, we have a service contract like that.
We originally wanted them to check to see if it was something that they did on their hookup back there. That the ca, all three cables came into.
They wouldn't have done that for free? Like, come out to check that?
He had to test it, he came out and tested it and it ran whatever, and that's how we knew that that's what the problem is with the TV.
I mean, we have to pay it, but I guess I just, for future reference, we pay a monthly fee for technology support.
For, okay.
To brainstorm.
Good to know, huh? Okay.
Um. I think that would come from professional services, don't you?
I, I agree, I just have to hear from you, professional services.
Yeah. Yeah, town, town general, professional services. Do we need a, a motion for them?
I think motion that we approved.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's in the book, it's a, I just need to know where to, where to pay for it.
Or they were approved. Nowhere. Okay.
So, without being a look?
You do not, okay.
Okay. And we have a brainstorm invoice, number three two four five nine.
Yeah, new business number six, the total is two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars, same question. This is for the five refurbished laptops.
Well, these are refurbished.
To see some of the other equipment, yeah. I would say, there's plenty of money in there. Alright. Drive Clean Indiana membership invoice, number four seven two three.
Okay, so this, this one is, it's two thousand dollars to renew our, uh, membership fees for Drive Clean Indiana.
Oh, sorry.
What is Drive Clean Indiana?
So, it is a lobby group consortium that pushes for clean, uh, tur- clean travel, so any kind of, uh, electric car charging stations, they're gonna promote all of that.
Can we drop our skirt?
Those long legs over there, you got kicking at the curtain.
I'm looking at this tomorrow, make sure that doesn't happen again.
How long have we been a member?
Uh, Tony, as long as I can remember, I think we've been paying this.
Is it something that?
Yeah, Roseanne asked a follow-up question. What we get out of it?
Right.
Right.
I, I thought about this before, I, I can't tell you what we get out of it, other than saying we support Drive Clean Indiana.
We don't have a flag anywhere.
So, for two thousand dollars, it's up to you, but.
And when is it due by?
It was due, I'm May twenty-third.
It's, it's, it was due eight one.
Oh, sorry, the date was May twenty-third, due eight one.
It's up to you if we renew it or not. Like I said, I, I can't, uh, I, I've tried to think of what I could say in order to say that we benefit from it, and other than saying we're a part of it. Okay, can't give you anything.
Aye. I mean, I, I feel like at this point, I, I don't know what the benefit would be. I'd have to agree. For us.
I agree.
If, if the organization wanted to come back and
Resell.
you know, present or something, and, you know, I, I, they could come to a public meeting.
Yep. I agree.
Okay.
Oh, no, you're okay, what else do you have, we can stop there. You want, or not?
Okay, new business number eight?
Yeah.
New business number eight is a memorandum of understanding, uh, with the Westchester Township trustee, so, just real quick, I'll. So, this is, uh, you know, this is the, the contents of it, so, Westchester Township established a Township Roads and Infrastructure Fund on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. We are required to have a memorandum of understanding with the applicable municipalities within the boundaries of Westchester Township for the transfer of funds from the Township Roads and Infrastructure Fund to the city, town, county. Westchester Township is comprised of six municipalities, the town of Chesterton, town of Burns Harbor, town of Blue Makers, town of Porter, city of Portage, and county of Porter. I enclosed the adopted memorandum of understanding with the town of Chesterton, the town of Porter, the town of Burns Harbor, town of Blue Makers, town, the city of Portage, and the county of Porter, state of Indiana. The gist is that the money in the Township Roads and Infrastructure Fund of Westchester Township will be divided equally between the six municipalities, with a deferment of judgment to each municipality as to how to spend its respective money in compliance with Indiana Code thirty-six dash six dash ten dash four. So, enclosed are two copies, a resolution to establish the Westchester Township Roads Infrastructure Fund and the memorandum of understanding. On page two of the memorandum of understanding, there is a signature line for an official of the town of Burns Harbor, and a signature line for someone to attest. Please have the memorandum signed and attested, one copy is for your records, please return the other copy to me and the envelope by enclosed for your convenience. Sincerely, Suzanne Fieldbrick. So essentially, we enter into the memorandum of understanding, and that's what allows us to have funds dispersed to us by the Westchester Township trustee via the Westchester Township Roads and Infrastructure Fund. So, what we need is a motion to authorize Jenny to sign this.
Have we ever gotten funds from them?
It was established on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll just.
Been asked to receive money from someone.
Jenny did this.
Clay, have you looked at this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve them. I'll second. Do you have discussion?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Have sentience? Thank you, Jenny will take care of that after.
And then. Number nine, approval of the financial report. Is this your new, like, is this the new? Financial report?
That's, no, that's the estimation of miscellaneous revenue Tony requested that I provide that. So, the three financial reports are still, the fund report, the appropriation report, and the revenue report, they were all emailed to you over the next week.
Okay. Okay. And though, okay, so were those after August was closed out?
After August was closed, yes.
Wait, was it, was it September, after September?
No, September is not closed out yet.
What was, what time of, like, of the month will you close the, out of month, okay.
Tomorrow. Yep.
And then, were we gonna go back to a financial report without the bind?
We are, so I'm struggling with the timing of it. Of, of, all I, all I can give you now would be the financial report through the end of August.
Okay.
Is that would, is that even helpful? I mean, August is closed, here's the reporting, but then we close.
I mean, ideally, the month is closed and that information is provided, you know, in the, in the
At the, at the meeting.
In the week prior to the council meeting closing out, and then, you know, turning that around, ideally.
And I think potentially, when we see the council meeting falling on the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth of the month, that's a lot easier than when it's on the eighth.
Yeah.
So, just timing wise.
So, I mean, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Sorry, I'm reading.
Okay. Discussion, or take some time to look through it?
Okay.
I'm gonna.
Roll call.
Will you, do you mind doing roll call meeting?
No, uh, Councilwoman Biancari?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilwoman McCarty?
Yes.
Approval to pay vouchers with three or more signatures, some moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Councilwoman Biancari?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilwoman McCarty?
Abstain. Approval of purchase orders submitted with three or more signatures.
Some. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Biancari?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilwoman McCarty?
Abstain. Again?
We're good.
Alright, old business, um.
I think there's a couple more things for new business, though, trick-or-treat.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
October thirty-first, five thirty, seven thirty, Jeremy?
Yep.
Okay.
Jeremy, I do notice that some other towns are extending till eight o'clock.
Which towns would those be? They're not doing any communities, I can tell you that.
I thought that, I thought that Chesterton was, is that not the case?
Not unless they, not, not unless their police commission made a change in the meeting, that wasn't what was proposed.
I didn't see it in Brian's, I heard it. Okay.
Um, the discussion was between me, Chief Richardson, as well as Chief Dicky from Porter. The idea is that if our hours are unified, that we're not gonna have people speeding from community to community to try and get an extra half hour in while we have kids out in the street. There was talks about extending it from five to eight, my concern is, trick-or-treat is still on Friday, and next year, I, I voiced my opinion that next year, being on Saturday, I'd be more open to extending those hours, because I don't think that conflict exists with as far as travel from, to and from work, at least for not as many people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this year, I still think isn't it, we stick with the same thing that we've been doing, and that's, it was a consensus between the three chiefs.
Okay.
And I would just point out, schedules haven't been set yet, but that is sectional football first night, so between Chesterton and Valpo and Michigan City and the four, those four teams will play each other, so there'll be a game, so there could be a home game for Chesterton, could be away, same with just.
Lots of traffic.
And, well, just in, you may have less people, more people trying to do it earlier, so they get to the ball games, but I think those sectional draws are here in the next ten days or so.
Okay. Thank you.
We also have an Anthem refund check. Um, six thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. Um, I would just make a motion to use that towards, uh, the premium.
I'll second that.
For the twenty twenty-six premium?
Whatever the letter said. Um, it's a, it was a refund, I don't know if you can use it right now, and then there'd be some cost savings, if you divide it out between the departments, then the cost saving goes to each, you know, department.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second, right. Roll.
Uh, Roseanne, you standing?
Yes.
Uh, do you want me to keep going individually?
Yes, honestly.
Yes, if you don't mind.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Biancari?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilwoman McCarty?
Yes.
Did, have, last month, Nick, did you look into doing electronic payments to our vendors, like, straight from the banks, like, okay?
Yeah, we did, we did look into that, Cora was out for like a week, week and a half, couldn't get her, so I, we need to get in with Cora at Horizon in order to figure it out.
Okay. Okay. Is, is that something we can do?
Yes, it's actually something.
Okay, I just, it, I think it'd just be better.
Okay.
In, in the long run, don't you?
Yeah, we're, we're, I'm already looking into it, yeah.
I mean, okay, cool. And then, I was looking at just fund balances and CCD and CD, and then I thought about the art funds. Um, those have to be spent by the end of next year, do we know if we've, are we done paying after the salt dome applica, oh, never mind. Cause there's still two hundred and fourteen thousand in there, and I'm like, why is there still so much money, but we have the third pay tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But did, did you all, like, determine how you're gonna spend down every penny of that?
I think that we were waiting for what the final total on the salt dome, because I know there shouldn't be that much left after, but yes, but yes, I know that there will be some that we need to use.
Okay. Okay. So, once, how much is, do you know how much the salt dome is?
Final payment is thirty thousand two hundred dollars.
So, I feel like we need to make sure that, like, everything is in there, so we know what's left, the, cause it seem, cause when we did the renovation here,
Uh-huh.
the renovation and the salt shed were supposed to all come from there.
Right.
And then part of renovation, some of the things ended up, um, the council came to the RDC and asked the RDC to cover some of those costs, because we didn't have the cost, that we didn't have the funds.
What is the bill that the RDC paid for this room? What did the RDC cover? What is the bill that the RDC paid for this room? What did the RDC cover? Oh, I can't even remember. Yeah, I can't even remember what it was.
If, so our renovation is something you can use ARC money for?
I believe so.
If that's the case, then I would love for us to figure out what is left because we need new floors in the building, the restrooms, the kitchen, the office, and it needs to be repaid. I I I would like to do that. I think between CCD and CEDIT, there's gonna be funds to cover that, but if this ARC money can be used for renovations, I'd really like to know what is actually left and potentially use that money to do some renovations.
What's the balance that we have now?
Well, it says according to the fund, or sorry, appropriation, um, one, I don't know, I'm sorry, um, two fourteen, two thirty is the unexpended balance. And if we only have thirty thou, I I'm just feeling like something's missing.
So we have thirty, I was like from the payout position three for tonight, but we got an email from Amy at Global with four invoices and one room was for a salt storage design.
And that comes from ARC also?
That should, I feel like that should be part of the salt dome set, that's only like two thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars.
Okay. I feel like that's more than should be remaining, but I wasn't a part of planning how to spend it. So, um, I actually, it's probably in my mailbox. I asked Maddie to print a detailed appro, like, detailed from the fund so we can see everything and see if something's missing. Cause again, we have till the end of twenty twenty-six. Um, and although I think you had to say what you were, anyway. If we can use it to renovate, I'd like to do that. Otherwise, use some CCD.
The detailed appropriations report is in there, it's printed.
Yeah.
I'll get it, I'll put it on the board. How can you answer on R, on R, are you allowed to?
Yeah, cause I know you have to have a plan by twenty twenty-four or something. And if it's, if that's, can't be included in the plan, then I don't know. We'll have to see what that plan was. Um, regardless though, I would like for us to ask Brandon to get some quotes on flooring for the restrooms, the main office, your office, and the kitchen. He feels like they can man, manage the painting during the winter season, but I think it would be, I would make more sense to have someone install flooring. Are you guys okay if he
Get quotes.
Yeah, get some quotes and looks into that. Okay, I'll let him know that.
So, do you have anything else on your, on your list?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, if you mind on old business. Do we have, do we wanna address the street sweeper agreement, or do we wanna put that on for the next agenda? Seems it was just kind of early.
I mean, it, is it a price on the agreement or it's just the agreement? Do you have a plan?
No, I think, I think it's the time that we have it.
Okay.
Or was it a set amount?
We have to set them out, I mean. I'm afraid I'm gonna lose what I have here. I close out of this.
I don't write up my floor.
Well, I give it back and forth to my email and I close out the wrong thing and then reopen it all and, so I'm afraid to even move it, you know?
Yeah, I did the same.
Okay, I'll pull it up. At a daily rate of six fifty.
And do we know how many? It doesn't say how many days.
Well, it says estimated pickup date was ten twenty-seven, expected return is eleven three.
So four, five.
Actually, we just do it at the next meeting.
We just wait, we'll put it on the next meeting and ask for more detail.
Yeah. What specifically it needs to be.
So you, if you're ten thirteen.
Sure. Mm-hmm. Can you add that to that agenda?
To the ten thirteen agenda?
Correct. Street sweeper agreement. We just need the specifics of how much to approve it for.
Okay.
Okay. I can, we can continue on with the business and.
And there is a delivery charge and a pickup charge too for each, so.
But it does, you have a total on there, it's just the agreement. I guess that's what we really need is to know what the total is so we can approve it.
I'm not seeing.
Yeah.
Old business, Republic Trash Recycle Contract renewal.
Okay, so initial contact was very positive and then radio silence since then. I called the guy twice this week, Monday and yesterday. He's out of the office, so not getting any response. We're running out of time.
The books are ready to be printed.
The books are ready to go and we just need to hit print and start collating them. I guess my recommendation would be that we go to the twenty twenty-six agreed upon contract number and a, and approve it and and go. So they have to agree by mutual agreement, but we have to come up with some number.
So you said he feels like they would agree to that two-year?
He indicated, he indicated that, you know, I remember I flippantly asked him, you know, did you get it, and he said, yeah, I think we can, but
That he could potentially get us a savings.
we, I think we go with the twenty twenty-six agreed upon number.
Which is how much of an increase?
Um, I think it was like three percent. Takes it up like less than a dollar.
Mm-hmm.
That would be my recommendation is that we just go with the original contract. So you guys don't need to approve anything, we just need to proceed.
Are you trying to figure out what to charge the residents?
Yes. Cause we need to put it on the book and and that little yellow coupon book that goes out.
Well, if we think that it's gonna be at least that, I think we can still negotiate and potentially charge the residents, you know, a little bit more than we're spending.
And and then if we, and then you guys can decide what to do with the overage. I can explain.
But I would say, put that on, if you need to print the book so they can go out, but continue to see if you can get a better price.
Right, oh, 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 one percent, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we were in a four-year contract, this is extending it to, and they got the prices for the.
Yeah.
I mean, just to be a hundred percent clear, we we have a two-year contract with two two-year mutual options.
Okay. Okay.
And we're in the, we're essentially in the fourth year now. We have two years, twenty-six and twenty-seven are by mutual agreement.
So the final. Yeah, I mean, they need to print the books and get those going, so I would say the, whatever about fifth year.
So we're gonna print the books, make the fifth year mutual option, and then if there's any overage, you guys will have to decide what to do then.
Okay. Gary up Salt Dome, application number three. We get an email sent to us on nine twenty-two. I believe all the paperwork was there, um, to close that out. And the final payment is thirty thousand two hundred dollars. Um, and that will re, that's for the release of all retainish being held.
Most of the pay. Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman B. Cardy?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
And Councilman Bozak?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Alright, go to the order. Um, I know Tony had some questions at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, I just, um, did, have you heard anything on the Cliffs tax appeal?
I'm gonna go, but can I, can we go back to my section?
Oh, you're, no, we can't.
You're red, you're, you're, no, now you're, now you're gonna finish our question first.
I know, I know you're feeling good about the fact that I made it not yet, so my, my number one, uh, so from soon after.
Right.
Uh, essentially, she asked me, while we are hesitant to pay anything towards the legal appeals process, what your opinions would be about reimbursing for the legal defense process in the event that the appeal is successful. So, i.e. we have no risk of losing. We only pay our, set our portions if the appeal.
So we don't, so Cliffs hasn't received a decision? If they are awarded the appeal, can't, does the county have the right to do anything? I mean, they're going through the proper channels, right? They're appealing the board.
Yes.
And they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Yes.
Does the county then and any other, can they at that point do that?
Can they do what?
Like, go to court to fight it?
They can. I mean, they can, they can appeal the ruling of the board to award, and my place has, anybody can sue anybody else for anything at any time, right?
Okay. Okay. Uh-huh.
I don't like that shirt, so I'm gonna.
Right.
Go, wow.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, yeah, I guess my guess I.
His shirt?
This is from my family pictures.
He doesn't like flails.
His shirt.
Uh, I mean, my personal opinion is it's still up in the air. Would we? I mean, when we get there, come back and ask me.
I'm right there.
I guess I'm just, you know.
That's, that's where it's at. She just asked me, she asked me to raise it.
It's not a no, it's that come back, come back and ask me when, when you do it, you know, when we get there.
You did.
Because I think we also need to have the conversation based on whatever the outcome is, what is it, the likelihood, right? If we appeal it, that we would, then it would be in our favor, because then, okay, is, you know, I think, uh, not enough information, really,
Right.
in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I will tell her that tomorrow. We have a phone call at eleven thirty tomorrow, so I'm gonna tell her that. Alright, uh, number two, I just need to notify you, e-verify is still down due to the federal government shutdown. So we are unable to perform any e-verify tasks at this time.
Do we need to?
So, um, we had a couple new hires.
When you hire a new employee?
Yeah, when you hire a new employee, you have.
Yeah, who'd we hire when this, I thought we hired people before. You have three days to e-verify someone, one place or other.
Right.
We got Joe, Officer Joe Creed.
Yeah, this is a new one. So there is a process, so if you could call Tony on the three-day rule, so the three-day rule for creating new e-verified cases is temporarily paused. Uh, the data from the e-verify system is down, do not count towards the three-day rule now. Um, we do paper I-nines for pending e-verified cases, and that's what we did for both of the new hires.
Okay.
So that's really just letting you know that. Um, anticipate that e-verify is gonna be down until the end of the shutdown. Uh, number three on my list is, uh, the updated liens sheet is in the SharePoint. I need your permission to.
Where is it in the SharePoint?
I created a, there's a folder called liens.
Don't get sexy with the teacher.
I did, see, I'm getting it, I'm, I'm getting my A-plus right now.
Um, we're gonna see, unless this is a hint, once I verify.
Ooh, can you grade it?
It's, I think it's on the Town Hall main section, and then there should be a folder for liens, and then September.
Let's see if I can, I do.
You see it?
I see, yes, yes, I do. There's two in there though. Are they the same?
There should be, uh, one of them is the lien doc itself, and then the other one is the instructions.
Okay.
So I just need approval to go file section number these.
Actually, there's two. There's one that's not all the way done, so you must have two copies of it.
I must have saved an extra copy.
The same, B-plus.
Two submissions.
B-plus.
Come on, A-minus, A-minus.
No.
These things.
B-plus.
I'll take the B-plus.
Okay.
So I just need your approval to go file, uh, these liens.
A motion to approve filing of the liens.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll, roll call, please.
Councilman B. Cardy?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Next, uh, number four, Tony asked me to print out, these were in your mailboxes, the some information about, you know, SB one, uh, so in there is from AIM. I won't read it to you, you can read it yourselves as a, as a summary.
Are these on the, in the chair drag as well?
This is not, cause I downloaded it, I just, I stole it, I stole it directly from AIM, so.
I'm trying to write paper on this here.
I'm totally in charge, so I gotta be careful.
He's, listen. Hey, I told, when I first saw Tony, I tore any of his lessons. I know, I'm there.
So I will summarize for you though. So SB one provides significant new property tax relief for homeowners by phasing up the homestead deduction uh, to two-thirds of the homestead assessed value, providing a tax credit for up to three hundred dollars or ten percent of the final tax bill. So essentially, they're moving around, and I say they, it's the state legislatures, the government of the state of India. They are moving, property taxes are going down. The option for you is a local income tax, and this is on page three. So the county is gonna be able to do a one point two percent local income tax. They do not share that with us. It is reserved to the county.
Those are shock noise.
It's a shock to you.
So how about me?
We have to do our own. You have to do one.
Mm, e- even the size of our community?
Yes.
They changed that?
We are a large company.
Cause prior.
It was twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, prior, we weren't big enough that the county would have to share with us.
We are.
And, but, I don't know, I'm sorry if you said this. The CEDIT or lit is the, is the tax now that we receive, and that is going away in twenty twenty-seven. So not only is in, is tax going down, the ability to collect that is going away, and it has to go through the county or through us, but I thought we were too small. Okay, they must have changed that. Because, yeah.
How?
All around, there's gonna be a negative impact.
Everywhere.
It's everywhere. Okay, so give that a read. If you have any questions, let me know, and I can reach out to Amy on your behalf. Additional appropriations is the next item on my list. Um, Joe and I met this week to go through the building departments appropriations that are gonna be needed. Uh, those, so that'll be ready for next month's meeting. Essentially, it's related to the perf of 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 going to a full-time building commissioner, that's, that's the shortfall. So that'll be in next week, but for the other department heads, if you have additional appropriations, we need to start figuring out what we're gonna do for the end of the year so that we have time to, uh, to get those adopted. Just a reminder to the department heads that the liaisons wanna follow up with the departments that aren't here. My last thing, did you guys, I I, August, if I missed it, what happened with resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen?
The transfers?
Yes.
Approve.
Approve. Okay.
I'm just making sure. Did you read them all?
I did.
I'm sure you did, great.
And that's last one, well.
You weren't that big word.
And Jenny, you have a stain on this.
That is correct.
Alright, that's all I had, folks. Uh, I'm sorry, that's a lie. Three more things.
My boy.
Global, three invoices, twenty-five dash ninety-six, twenty-five dash ninety-seven, and twenty-five dash ninety-eight.
What about twenty-five dash, um, one hundred?
One of them is a sanitation.
Oh, okay, you're right, it is, sorry.
I have three, so, yeah, the.
The fourth one was for locates.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, uh, first one is time for a landscape architect, two thousand six hundred thirty-six thousand twenty-five cents. And this is punch list related.
Must be solid, chat. I have salt storage design.
Yes. Application two, application three, yes.
So, ARC money?
Yeah. Yep. Ninety-seven is, uh, rate for project manager, field crew, and professional land surveyor. Um, this is CCMG. So this is them updating the, uh, you know, field crew drove roads and collected video footage for Pacer ratings updates, sorted and converted video footage for updated ratings, reviewed the Pacer data, that's the surveyor. So that's.
Is that, where are we paying that from? Is that from MVH? Where, with, anything related to that CCMG when it comes to engineering, where have we been paying that from? I think it's C, it's CCD miscellaneous services. Unfortunately, there is only two thousand dollars left in that fund. I just, I have the, it is CCMG is where they've been paying, it's been being paid from, but there's not, how much is that one?
Uh, the total amount for, yeah, the first one was twenty-six thirty-six, the second one is thirty-one twenty-five, and the third is, uh, two seventy-seven fifty.
Three thousand. Mm-hmm.
Well, the twenty-six thirty-six, that's coming from ARPA.
Right.
Yeah, that was, that was on here already.
And the thirty-one twenty-five? What was the twenty-seven fifty or two seventy-seven fifty?
It's, this one should be CCD miscellaneous services, account three nine two.
Okay. What was, how much was the second one?
Three thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
The one that two, two seven?
Seven fifty. Two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, I think it's.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was like, two hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, the third, the third one.
Twenty-seven thousand or two cents, sorry.
No, the, the, so the, the first, so, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
In this, twenty-five dash ninety-six, that's okay, twenty, I, cause it's, it's confusing. Twenty-five dash ninety-six is two thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, and that's ARC.
Right.
Okay, twenty-five dash ninety-seven is three thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And that should be out of CCD miscellaneous services, account number three nine two.
Right.
And then the third is twenty-five dash ninety-eight, and that's for two seventy-seven fifty, and that'll come out, town engineering services, three one five.
Can you do a transfer from other equipment into miscellaneous, in CCD, from other equipment to miscellaneous services to cover that difference?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we could, you do that for Monday and then we can make sure.
I can do that for Monday.
So I would make a motion to pay those two from CCD miscellaneous services, three nine two. But we'll need that transfer because it'll go negative. And then can we follow up and ask if we're gonna expect, expect any more CCMG bills? Cause again, as we're nearing the end of the year, what we've, you know, appropriated to spend from these funds, it'd be nice to know, so if there's things that we wanna try to do before that we have money for, we can look at that and know how much we really have to work with.
I sure can.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call when you're ready.
Uh, Councilman Bean Cardy?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
And do you have any drinks?
Huh?
Any other drinks? Oh, we're not on the starship anymore. Do you have more?
I do not.
Oh, okay. Those were your three items.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just had one thing, um, I don't know if this, I know this was discussed earlier, but after we put the new gutters on the building here, we need to put gutter guards, because a leaf is gonna be falling soon and it's gonna go right in to the, to the gutters. And that's, I talked to Brandon about that, that's something they can handle in the street department, Joe said he'd be willing to help them with it. It's for them to do that themselves rather than, it was like two thousand dollars, if I remember right, to have the guy that did the gutter, gutters themselves do it, it only costs us like three or four hundred dollars to purchase the gutter guards and then have our guys do it themselves, so I don't know.
How much money do they need?
I would, I would probably put it to the point of five hun- not to exceed five hundred dollars, that should cover it.
To purchase the gutter guards?
Put the gutter guards on that, right, that would be to purchase the gutter guards from ours. Or Home Depot, whichever's cheaper.
So are you gonna make that motion, there's money at CCD other equipment?
Yes. Make a motion to, uh, install gutter guards on the new gutters installed on the town hall, and that to exceed five hundred dollars.
From CCD other equipment?
From s-
CCD, from their equipment?
From CCD, other equipment.
Second.
Um, discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Bean Cardy?
Yes.
Councilman McGraw?
Yes.
Councilman Bozak?
Yes.
And Councilman McCarty?
Yes. And I have one, do we have an update on unsafe building fund?
The notes from last month said there'd be an ordinance for tonight, like.
I thought we already had it, because the term there already is an unsafe building fund.
We do, and then we, and then you and I, you reviewed the ordinance that I wrote, so we already have one.
Oh. Wait, so there is one that we need to have at the council meeting though?
There, there's already an unsafe building fund at town code.
There, there.
Yes, but the conversation last month was about create, updating or doing something about the ordinance, and it was,
That there was, I mean, that the ord- the ordinance that I wrote, this, this, yeah.
It was said that it would be here tonight at this meeting.
We push it to November.
Hmm. Yeah, I just was, I just didn't wanna lose it.
I will add it to the agenda.
What, what's, I only have? Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Roll call?
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, propose, extensions.
Cubs one.
Noting, noting the time is eight.
Well, maybe I'll go home and celebrate then.
I mean, we're gonna celebrate, but.
We're gonna celebrate.
Yeah, I can.
I think we're on the same page, cause I was gonna.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeremy. Uh, I have one minute, Jen, can you sign this?
Guys, please all go in and, and check the table and make sure to sign everything that needs to be signed.
I did.
Uh, and then, can we, can we talk to you for one minute?
One minute.
Football's second.